We call the meeting in order. And we have a real call, Patty?
Board member Brenda Buenasera.
Here.
Board member Rudy Davis.
Here.
Vice Chair Hart McIntyre.
Here.
Chair J.C. Infam.
Present.
City manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Linda Fisher for Pinellas.
Here.
And Angela Berry was unable to attend.
Okay, let's take a look at the agenda. Do I hear an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Prove all the minutes. February 1st. Have you had a chance to peruse them?
Yes, motion to approve the votes.
Second.
Second.
Send by Brenda? Those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, here we are. Review of the draft comprehensive plan. Hoping that there's no extra little things to be handed in before we start. We have pages five to nine that were slipped in my computer yesterday, so... I guess we should start with the beginning and go up to the new ones. I don't see any problem with one to five, or one through four, as anybody else in the room.
One through four, would pages your top?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've already gone over all of this.
What would you flip, just again for context, as the chair stated, we've gone through this, but what the difference between what we've done in the past and what we've done now is you were generally provided language loosely. You now have this in the form of an ordinance with the exhibits there, too, and you are approving this ordinance for it to be passed along, or you are determining whether to approve this ordinance to be passed along to the council for consideration on first and second reading.
Okay. So, we'll start at the beginning and see if, is there anything that anybody sees up through two, five?
Through page, now you're saying page five?
No, one through five.
Yeah, one through five. Up to 1.1, 1.7. But that's worth pretty much questions, I guess.
Oh, can I pose a question?
Sure.
Linda, starting with you. 1.1, 1.7, as we said earlier, is just signed by the governor. And addresses affordable housing. Affordable housing, I assume, starts with initial land cost and then build cost from there. So, as I see it, affordable housing in our community, once you pay for the land and the construction, is still beyond that of the average person that this bill is directed to try and ease access to. Would you concur with that?
I concur. I think your city is very unlikely to see any consequence of this new law. This is, this was Senate Bill 102, it's called the Live Local Act. What it does is allows certain affordable housing developments to override your local comp plan and land development regulations. They have to meet certain criteria. They have to have at least 40 percent of their units be affordable, and they have to be located on commercial, industrial, or mixed-use land. If that, if you've got a development like that in your, in any community, they are allowed to build to the highest density that's allowed anywhere within the jurisdiction, regardless of what the land use says, and the highest height within the jurisdiction, within one mile or three stories, whichever is taller. So, this new policy, 1.1, 1.7, that we put in there just acknowledges that that's what the law says. The law says that these developments are allowed to overrule your, your other comp plan policies, but I agree that it's very unlikely that you'll see consequences in your city. Because of what else?
Not that I oppose that. I think it's desperately needed throughout the state. When you think of the people that really need it, like teachers and first responders and others that aren't necessarily on a very high pay grade, especially in this state, it's admirable that that came to be, but I was just trying to put it in context of, do we need to worry about this?
Yeah. And, and, do you need to worry about it? No, but do you need to put a policy in your comp plan? Yes.
And we have to this, yeah.
In the remaining new-
So, we have to acknowledge that, that that policy could potentially affect us?
Right.
And there's no choice in that?
Correct.
As you said, it's really directed toward utilization of commercial or industrial property, correct?
Commercial, industrial, or mixed-use land.
So, so, and forgive me, because I'm still new and trying to understand all of this stuff. If somebody came along and somehow managed to develop a commercial property here, then we would be subject to this, is that what that's saying?
It has to be land that's designated for that purpose.
Can that designation be changed because of this?
The designation can't be changed because of this, but if, if you have any land in a community that is zoned already for residential, for, excuse me, for commercial or industrial or mixed use, then somebody could utilize that.
So, as long as we never end up with a commercial designation, then theoretically... So, do we have protections that keep us from ever seeing something designated commercial?
You enjoy the ability, you as a jurisdiction, still enjoy some modicum of home rule, and so, so long as your jurisdiction does not willfully change its land development regulations, it's not an issue for you. Your current code is adequate. You only have a basically high residential and low residential designation, and institutional, which is really just for this property. You don't have a commercial district, you don't have an industrial district presently, and you don't have a mixed-use district presently. Should your commissioners or elected officials, in response to the will of your residents, at some time change that, this would take effect. But presently, it's not a concern in this community that way.
As I say, on the map, there's nothing on the map that designates anything that's referred to that.
Correct. Those are not existing districts in your community that you need to be concerned about. Well, the, the mealy-mouthed lawyer answer I'm giving you is that, that could change if the politics of this community change, and the political will is to change the look of this community, but in its, and there's, and I'm not saying that exists on your commission.
So, all it would take, really, is some great big developer, a whole bunch of money to come in here and buy stuff up on a beach and say, "We want to change that," and petition the commissioner or the council to change that.
That petition doesn't grant them an entitlement to-
No, but they, money talks.
Money talks, absolutely money talks, and money, money has always talked, and as has, you know, tax dollars, development dollars, and the promise of a new tomorrow. I mean, Music Man is a musical for a reason, right? So, yes, that possibility always exists, but that's not, in your present landscape, that's not an issue, beyond having to give a hack tip to the existence of this in your comp plan.
Okay, Rudy, what?
Just to touch the base, the Beller Beach Motel, that land is actually zoned, what, right now?
I think it's the higher-intensity residential.
Residential median, I believe.
Residential median.
Should be.
Okay, so it's not zoned commercial.
You do not have a commercial zone, you just-
And in the event it's knocked down, it's-
There's no commercial zoning in the whole map?
Right. And in the event that it's knocked down, our comprehensive plan says it has to be rebuilt as residential.
Medium.
Medium, right.
Correct.
But would that be affected by this?
No, it wouldn't. One other factor to keep in mind is this particular statute that's mentioned in the policy has been amended three times in the past three years. The legislature keeps going in and making changes, so if there should be a change to the statute that, that does affect your community, you'll at least be covered by this policy.
Okay, let's carry on. We can recreate all kinds of situations, or we don't have to.
I would just add that the remaining pages that are attached to it, this one policy, I put it where I thought it should go, and it bumped the numbers of all the other policies down, so that's why we printed additional pages.
I had a question on page seven of that, and under policy 1.1, 1.11. And it's just the, everything I put in here has to do with the word that's used, and it says desires to maintain.
Wait a minute, we didn't get to seven yet. We're at one to four.
Okay.
I had that turned off.
It's a little Irish.
That's for you to get in.
Damn bill collectors. Want to buy my house? Anybody, I will have it. Every other day, somebody wants to buy my house. We're settling right now with some semblance of order from one to five. I don't want to jump to seven and six until we get there.
Okay.
Is everything acceptable from one to five? Pages.
Now, when you say one to five, I think you need to move on out to one to eight for both, but where it changed.
No, I want to change when it starts at five. Five to, five to nine is where it changed.
Right. So, what are we saying?
First four.
First four, spine.
Okay.
Let me nicely.
Well, except the first, the recommendation of accepting the first four?
So moved.
Second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So be it. Now, five to, the new insertion, five to nine.
Motion to approve.
Please.
I think that's the one where I had a question.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. So, before we motion, I had a, had a question. The word desire doesn't mean we're committing to maintaining. It just says what we kind of like to.
Correct.
Is that as strong as we can make it, is that as strong as we want to make it?
Where were we at?
Page seven, 1.1, 1.11. City-recognized contribution, Beller Beach Marina desires to maintain its use as a marina.
You can say that it will be maintained as a marina, but that might not be possible economically and for the community.
That theory comes back to this other issue, though. If you don't have that, now all of a sudden, that opens it up for somebody to say, "All right, let's do something commercially with it," and then all of a sudden, all this other stuff kicks in.
I have a question for clarification. The Beller Beach Marina, is it owned by the city, or is it owned by a private property?
City.
Owned by the city, okay. So, the city can tie its own hands, but it's probably not going to be what your council wants to do. That's just not typically what cities do.
But what if it's what the people want to do?
Well, ultimately, the council has to approve the, the language. We can make it say that, if you want, and then the council can modify it if they choose, unless our attorney recommends against that.
Legal verification?
Legal verification, I will tell you that the, the aspirational language that is in here is more commonly the kind of language you would find. Placing an absolute limitation on the government is better than on a private property owner, to be sure. Placing that limitation as a comp plan limitation, you can certainly attempt to. That, if that's what the majority wishes, you can make that recommendation to the council. They can determine whether they wish to proceed with that. This language is typically, you would say that if somebody was doing something in, if the city was doing something of intervention of this, you would raise this provision and make the political muck of it, if you will, for lack of a better term. But having it be so absolute, it's just, government's not typically in the habit of biting its own hands, is all.
So, we do want to avoid absolutes as much as possible?
In general, like, I'm an attorney, I'm a relativist. Absolutes don't account for the ways that the world changes.
Right.
Absolute can be changed overnight.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussions from?
Is he okay with it?
Yeah.
He's okay with it. Or he'd have jumped up and down.
I want our team to motion to accept the recommendations supplied to us on, for pages five through nine.
Motion.
All those, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. So be it. So moved. Okay, now, to carry on. We wish to continue on with page 10, and just peruse from 10 on, see if there's anything that we have to reverge, revergate, that's not the right, reiterate, change, balance, reverberate, whatever you want to do with it. Bring it up now.
The next section is called the transportation element, it's 10 through 15, I think it might be proven to take these things as elements.
Transportation, I have a lot of sorts of 10.
And that's the one that probably is most concerning to us as a community because of the transportation impact on our community to the north. Let me just say first, ask, Linda, do you think there's anything that, well, I'm not sure you're the person to ask, but I'm harboring some growing concerns that Forward Pinellas is part of the problem. I think you figured that out already.
I am going to remain silent on that issue.
Big one?
I'm going to remain silent on that issue.
Yeah, I know, and probably for God's security, better to do that. But is there anything, I feel that you have some fiduciary relationship to us since we've hired you to come in and assist us in this process. It may not be to the letter of the laws, Attorney Lawrence pointed out to me, but is there anything in that transportation element that we could add, in your opinion, that would be a stronger statement as to our objections to what's happening in increased traffic?
I've put in the best language that I can think of, the strongest language, because really, your recourse as a community is to work with Forward Pinellas and to work with your neighbor in jurisdictions and Pinellas County, and, you know, all joking about my agency aside, that is the avenue that you have. And so, we've put in a lot of policies about working with those agents, those entities, and looking for solutions for specific issues like residents not being able to merge onto Gulf Boulevard, and looking for engineering solutions to potentially divert traffic, or at least get the traffic to yield. And this is the strongest language that I know of with the ability that you have. And all I can recommend that you do is use the Forward Pinellas forum to make some noise as a community.
I would say that Mayor Gaddis is, I believe, is going to be a representative to that body in some form, be it through VC or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. And that the recently appointed new representative is from the Barrier Islands as well?
I believe that you might be referring to David Will.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, and he's from Reddington Beach.
Right, okay. All right, so-
What would you, what would you put into this? Would you want to put more onus back on Clearwater and, and, you know, and make your egress and ingress?
No, I, I don't think through this comprehensive plan, there's much at all we can do. And I've talked to the mayor about some other avenues that I'm going to bring up in this meeting, because it may preempt some actions that we decide to take in the future. But let me just ask one quick question. Our comprehensive plan, I keep reading things that we are kind of committing to, and a lot of them are based on the high coastal, high-hazard area, and what the state envisioned as far as density and especially density and traffic and those kinds of things. Does Clearwater Beach have the same language in their comprehensive plan?
Yes. The difference is that they had a lot of unused density before they adopted that policy language, before everyone was required to adopt that policy language. So, they are, they have a big pool of unused density, and they've just been moving it around to allow those larger developments. I wish I could give you a more satisfying answer, but that's, that's what happened.
No. Okay. Like I said, there's very little we can do here, so, other than what we have done here, so I'm favorable to motion to approve the transportation element, I should.
Second?
We're discussing the transportation element, is there anything under transportation on further, on the board? Are you pointing to her for a reason?
No, I, I missed a step. I wanted to ask Randy if he had the same opinion. Have we gone about as far as we can go with this transportation element in finding some resolution to our issue?
As it relates to a comprehensive plan and the purpose and nature of a comprehensive plan, I think by adopting the amendments here, you're making your position on transportation clear. I'm never going to tell a client if they've gone as far as they can go, I'm shy of, you've gone to the Supreme Court and you've lost. So, I won't issue, I'm not going to opine on that, so it's not to me to have that weaponized at some later date. But I'd say that this certainly captures the discourse in this body over the past few months, and, and the palpable frustration about transportation issues. I think that's, that is found here.
Okay. So, I continue my motion to approve.
Just one comment we did bring up, the discussion about controlling the traffic over the bridges, et cetera, and I want that be known, that the committee was concerned about that, to the point of curtailing it somewhat. We did discuss it because of the traffic on our bridge. Things have, if you've driven down Clearwater Harbor and along the Gulf, you see more motels going up than, where are these people going to go over our bridge? So, it's not that we're avoiding this, it's just that we're limited with our conclusions. So, we did bring it up, and we're very concerned about it.
Does it come back to the density, the amount of traffic flow over either of these bridges? Is that really the only control there is? The bridges are designed for a certain amount of traffic, and if it's exceeding it, then it's an issue that has to be addressed. But it looks at an average 724 instead of looking at a peak and saying, "The peak can't contain this, it can't handle it." How do we get them to look at it from a peak period rather than 724?
It, it is based on peak hour. I'm going to shift over to the data and analysis, because I did say something about that in here. So, this is what I wrote on page A5. One issue that has been noted is that the Barrier Island communities, whose traffic is significantly comprised of tourists, tend not to have the same peak hours as the majority in the county, which are largely determined by weekday commuters. While the same AM, PM peak hours are used countywide for standardization purposes, a local government can request that Forward Pinellas conduct a special traffic study tailored to an individual roadway. So, that is something we talked about in the data and analysis that is not included as a policy, but we could add a policy that says that if you choose.
I'm sorry, say that one more time, last sentence.
We talked about this issue of requesting a special traffic study.
Right.
We talked about it in the data and analysis, but we didn't put it in a policy, which we could do, if it's the will of this body.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Okay.
And let me ask, who determines LOS?
That is actually done by our agency as well, but it's based on a formula, so it's not anything that we have discretionary control over. And that is also included in your data and analysis, starting on page A4. Under the table on A, page A4, we talk about-
The formulas in there?
Yes. Volume over capacity, volume of the roadway over the-
Who said C?
I'm sorry?
Who says capacity?
Yeah, capacity is, is based on the number of lanes and the width of the lanes. There's an engineering formula that's used, it's standard nationwide. And then, so the volume is the observed number of cars that are driving on the road, and you divide the volume of cars by the capacity of the roadway, and then, based on the range that it falls into, that determines what the, what the LOS is. And that, that's spelled out at, at the request of you all. I spelled that out very clearly in the data analysis.
Were rated at?
For-
Gulf Boulevard is currently rated at what?
It's an E north of the Causeway and an F south of the Causeway.
E north of the Causeway, F south of the Causeway.
Mm-hmm.
Which causeway?
Beller Beach Causeway.
Yeah, that makes sense. But they're all turning the way around.
It's turned around, it should be, it should be the other way around.
F and E south.
I can double-check that, but that's what I found in our LOS report.
You're in a pretty good-
It may just be that there's more capacity to the north, but I will double-check this.
Second one.
Okay. I'll make sure that that's double-checked.
Definitely, yeah, go on, fine. One minute, your questions.
So, we could add a policy saying that the city requests, or the city shall request a special traffic study to account for the unique AM, PM peak hour associated with communities that are reliant on tourism. I wonder if that better?
Can you tie it to the LOS, saying this is the level that needs to be achieved? As a resident here, you'd want it either an A or certainly nothing worse than a B.
That's not, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That's not something probably that's within the scope of a comprehensive plan, and you can say that that's the desired level of service, but there are probably not enough policies that you could put in your comp plan to make that happen, given the conditions that already exist.
Let's go with a simple approach. Request the study?
Okay. One second to write that down, and then I'll read it to you.
All those in favor? Do you want to formulate that?
Oh, geez. Write it down, and then we'll book the approval.
Okay.
Can we make that?
I think the objective was this, to be our last meeting.
Correct.
Time-wise.
Correct.
So, can we accept this?
Yes, subject to an amendment incorporating that, absolutely. Your recommendation is to pass this ordinance on with language revising to account for the requested study.
Okay.
Then that can be done. Then that can be done.
All those in favor of that situation?
We feel cheap.
Okay.
Okay.
Something like, "Understanding that barrier island communities whose traffic is primarily composed of tourists tend not to have the same peak hour traffic as mainland communities, the city shall request a special traffic study for its principal roadways, its major roadways. Shall request a special traffic study from Forward Pinellas for its major roadways."
Is there anything there that...
Do you want to be specific? What?
What kind of study?
No, what streets?
Which roadways?
She's saying major. Read that one more time.
Causeway.
And the Causeway. Or we could say for Beller Beach, Causeway, and Gulf Boulevard.
Yeah.
Be specific.
Within...
Okay. Any wording there, Randy, that...
No, I think Ms. Fisher's got it in the way that she captured much of your revisions, I think, as an accurate and accurate representation of everything that you've said so far.
Okay.
And that will be policy 1.3.4 in the transportation element.
How does the city go about requesting that sort of procedure?
I will talk to our transportation person who told me that that's an option, and I will find out from her what exactly you need to do.
That should be in the form of a...
1.3.4.
Yes.
1.3.4. Transportation survey.
Patty, will we get an updated change of those to this?
I'll have to write it down when I get home and then email it to you.
And you'll, of course, also be, have public records access to the commission council and that will incorporate that.
I'll undertake a motion to object.
So move. You're wearing a new sweater.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Anything else under transportation? We'll proceed to housing element. Which it comes since?
15, 16, 17?
Yes. 15, 16, 17, yes.
Housing should be just page 15. Correct.
15 through 17.
15 is housing element, and then 16 starts infrastructure, right?
Correct. That's the best way.
Yeah. So housing element is 15.
Infrastructure, yes. Housing element, period. 15. Any situation there that...
I'm seeing a change made to a motion to approve 15 as...
Second.
Are there any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Infrastructure element on 16, 17.
Colonel, are you comfortable with those numbers? 115 gallons of sanitary sewer-potable water, 115 gallons per capita per day?
Yes, we wanted to just keep them. She bumped them down, if I remember, and then we wanted to keep them where they're at.
Right. This is the county's adopted standard. But this is much more generous than Tampa Bay, than SWFMA thinks you're going to need.
Oh, you can't say SWFMA no more. It says Southwest Florida, one major district.
I stand corrected.
Any other discussion on infrastructure? Entertainer motion to...
Motion.
Recommended?
Second.
Any further discussion? So carry it. Total Management Conservation Element. They're sticking together, Rudy, and I don't know where the hell they end.
I did one, I think I'm looking at page 22.
They never end.
On page 18.
Seven. Yeah.
On page...
Twenty-six.
Twenty, actually. It's just a, just a point. We call it Beller Beach Marina Facility. It's not really a marina, is it? Isn't it just docks? And do we...
Well, that's what they refer to as a marina. Anything with several docks.
Well, I haven't been a boater, maybe not many years as you are, but I've been with six months.
Well, I have one dock. If I had two, I'd call it a marina.
Yeah. It's not...
Chase these.
There's, there's no, there's no sanitary facility there, there's no...
They're on all the boats.
I know.
Well, what would you call it?
Docks. And I, but I'm just wondering if it's an issue. If it's not an issue, it's no big deal.
No, it's always...
It's always just been...
It's always been marinas, so...
It's an issue inasmuch as you want to, across your documents, have parallelism. And so since in your code and otherwise, it is referred to as the marina, that's the better, that way you avoid the argument that, "Well, they use this, we're hearing they use that word there," so they must have meant those were different things.
Okay.
No, it's any problem with it.
Twenty-three, and now coming to the absolutes. You've got a lot of, "The city shall..."
And this is one of the big changes to state law that happened since the last time you updated your plan. This is called the Peril of Flood Act, and they do specify a number of absolutes that you have to include in your plan. And I took the objectives or taken verbatim from the statute.
So we shall provide, if we look at objective 1.6, "We shall provide a transportation system," on page 23.
Okay, that was language, sorry, I was skipping down to the new content. Objective 1.6, that wording was already included in your comp plan, and I didn't change that.
Are we, all I'm getting at is are we obligating ourselves by saying, "We shall provide transportation system," and what defines transportation system?
Well, I was in the previous ordinances that they used the bus that was provided that runs up and down.
So there is a tran, the city provides a transportation system?
No, they...
Says through cooperation with Pinellas, "City shall provide."
I'm looking right now to see if Beller Beach is among the participating members of PSTA. I don't believe it is.
A lot of live work.
And this is saying, "We shall provide."
And that can be, without speaking to Ms. Fisher's things, I would say, from where I sit, looking at that language, a transportation system in cooperation with the county could be construed to include your bike lanes on your, because it says that promotes public safety.
Just asking, yeah, a question.
Your bike lanes, Gulf Boulevard, Causeways, those are all transportation systems, your roadways, clear and free roadways, clear and free bypass, clear and free, you know, those are multimodal pathways. Those are means of transportation and transportation roadway systems. Whether a transportation system is defined elsewhere, I don't know off the top of my head, but I would say to answer the question more broadly, and how would you construe this language, it's not, a transportation system would not on its face be limited exclusively to, "We, this is our pilot program where we provide this vehicle."
I'm not opposed to this, I'm just trying to ask, are we setting ourselves up?
Yeah, that's a good, it's, yeah, so do we want to put IE bicycles and something behind transportation system?
Well, the context here is disaster preparedness. So the policy under that objective is about evacuation routes.
So then Hart is, he's totally right about...
What system are we providing?
Is everybody going to be picked up and hauled out?
Yeah, that's the way I interpreted it when I read it. It's like, oh, we're going to provide this service, and the same thing, city shall reduce the risk of exposure of human life. I can see somebody coming along going, "You didn't do that, we're suing you."
Suing you.
Well, they'll sue you regardless, sir. I don't think...
I get it, but...
And I will tell you, your council committee doesn't say all the ways that we do that, that we would meet those kinds of objectives. The narrow conceptualization aside, again, I'm looking here to see if transportation system is a narrowly defined term, but in the context of the very next sentence of the sub-policy, if you will, saying coordinating with Pinellas County EMO to ensure evacuation routes are posted, that underscores the fact that a transportation system includes your roadways. And so we do provide a transportation system. And again, I'm not trying to litigate or argue the matter.
Somebody will.
If the language, if the language is there, has historically been there, and thus far has not presented a challenge, let's observe what our existing circumstances are as to why that might be the case. And so if our system is a simple, like, for example, you have a system in place for giving people decals for returning to and from the beaches in advance of and following an emergency event, that is a system in place, a transportation system, it regulates transportation access immediately before and following a storm. That could arguably be going to fit in that ambit. Again, I'm not, I'm not on the planner's side, a lawyer's going to look at this different than a planner, but from a lawyer's perspective, I don't, I don't find that language particularly controversial, knowing that these are...
We have bus stops.
No, we don't.
We don't have bus stops.
Nope. As long as I can remember, we have post stop, bus stops because the amount, the PSTA, I think, called...
Oh, that was a minimum.
Wanted to charge us for our two stops within a mile and a half or something was ridiculous, and every, no one uses it, we all drive. The only people that might use it is a maid that comes, and typically they come in their own cars, so we just opted out of it because of the cost to use ratio.
I don't have any heartburn about striking that objective. I misspoke about the ones that you're required to include, those start at objective 1.8. So 1.6 is an optional objective. We could take that out and we could put that policy 1.6.1 somewhere else, either under the previous objective or another place that talks more directly about evacuation. But I don't have, I don't have any heartburn about deleting that objective.
Deleting 1.6 altogether?
Correct. If that, if there's concern that that might be...
Randy, you want to put 1.6.1?
And, and again, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a wool hill, transportation system, but, you know, is it, is it providing an ingress and egress process that provides public safety and welfare?
So as far as...
Is it...
Just for the record, as far as emergency management, the, you know, the city allows the county to have special needs registration for evacuation. They work with the county and the fire district. So there is a, there is a registered, registration list that residents get on if they have special needs or need evacuation assistance.
So it's all whether you all can...
So eliminate 1.6, I suggest maybe 1.6.1 could go in as 1.5.8.
I was going to make that same suggestion, but I think that it would actually fit better under 1.3, so we can make that policy 1.3.7, since that talks directly about evacuation.
Oh, okay.
If that pleases the board.
So strike 1.6, make 1.6.1, 1.3...
Point seven.
Point seven.
And then the subsequent policies will all need to be renumbered, subsequent objectives and policies, since we're getting, getting rid of 1.6.
So we're eliminating on 1.6. So up to the... All those in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry it. Carry on, please.
Are we moving on to the next?
In the same situ, in the same...
Or we still within...
Yeah. Transportation.
Coastal and conservation.
Next one. It's coastal. Coastal and conservation element. I read this and reread it, and I still don't have anything in it.
Karen Ward, do you have any concerns about coastal management conservation element?
No, no legal concerns. It's a policy document, and ultimately I defer you to that regard, but I don't have legal concerns specifically.
We're here in motion to accept the coastal management conservation element.
So move.
Second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll proceed to recreation and open space element. Just as an aside, I often wondered why we could evacuate very simply three lanes going one way if there was a problem, and then somebody put trees right in the middle of the road. I never understood what the hell that meant. Hey, we got three lanes going out of the city, and then somebody put trees and islands and everything up and down a middle lane. That was always a head scratcher to me. I don't know about anybody else.
Interesting aspect, it could even solve some of the problems during the heat gallery.
Yeah, and if, that can be removed.
Well, if there's a big one coming, it'll be removed by itself.
Yeah.
I remember it being done, but I don't think I was...
You didn't do it, did you?
No, what, what was after my turn? Do you remember the, have any historical perspective on why they were put in? Was it part of Pinellas County beautification?
I think it was penny money, the previous pen three is when they were put in.
Is that what it was?
Having spent that on those, are we limited now in taking them out?
We're not limited at all. The county has already said it's doable to remove our assets from the roadway, that they would do it as well, but it was left in the council meeting that we were having the county redo a study of the intersection, especially over here with the 12th Street. And at that point, we'll get the numbers and see what it shows before any consideration.
Well, she's just an observation from the chairman.
You know, it's still, we still have a one lane coming and going bridge, so I'm not sure what that would do.
That's right.
Other than, what I do like is, but then if you fill up the traffic, emergency vehicles trying to get up and down the road to get to people or situations...
They get trapped.
Or trapped by those things, but if you fill it with traffic, it's just as bad. So I don't, I'm not seeing this as a topic for us to get into.
Well, at least we can observe it.
Yeah.
And we did.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Still remembering the mayor that had a, the little lady, Patty, that was mayor, when I first moved here. She had this beautification group, "We're going to put oak trees in that little park." And I thought, "Why? They fill your pool with acorns. Aren't they pretty?" I said, "Not around here, they aren't."
Back to the same thing, transportation system. What is a transportation system?
Page 10 has a little definition.
Page, way back in the front.
Under transportation. The opening line. Sorry, J.C., excuse me, sir.
What is it? Can we do it again?
Page 10.
So, you're right, Bill. I think in this case, then it's not talking about any physical. It's not a vehicle of any sort. You're right.
We're on intergovernmental coordination.
But not limited to.
Yeah. Okay. Does the city manager have any comment about this section? If he does, okay. Our eminent attorney?
I don't have any comment on the governmental coordination.
I always liked having goals and objectives, but I have no comment on this section at all.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Private property rights element. This is the city manager. Have any comment about this section? If he does not, okay. Our eminent attorney?
I don't have any comment on the governmental coordination.
I always liked having goals and objectives, but I have no comment on this section at all.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry.
Where is that? Capital improvement.
This is our bagel.
Page 33.
Forty.
Okay, I thought we were on 33.
Don't we go to 33? Capital improvements?
Forty, yeah, go.
If we went from intergovernmental coordination, 32. Next one should be capital improvement.
Correct. Page 33.
Yeah.
So, the table on 34 is based off of the last budget of the past.
Capital improvement, so.
There's some changes.
Yeah, one dropped.
Should we update that at this point, or should we--
What is the Gulf Boulevard beautification?
Goes up--
That's underground.
That's underground. It's not beautification, then. I mean, it's not like we're gonna do more in the middle of the road.
Right.
Okay.
So, should we update this?
Yes, if there have been changes that affect this, I would say we don't need the exact wording today, but if it's the understanding of the board, that we'll update this table.
We're here more than I am.
Which page are you referring to?
Page 34.
Page 34.
Yeah, you're just updating the numbers to respect current--
So, you had the generator project kind of fizzled out in the last work session. So, I mean--
I thought we had a generator.
We do not. No, we used to have one, and then we donated it to the Pinellas Suncoast long before me.
Why did we do that?
Why did it fizzle out?
We talked about it. We did some different quotes, side-by-side comparisons, and the council kind of went around the table.
So, actually, during an event, a hurricane, staff doesn't man this center at all. You, I think you go to--
Depends on the level. It depends on the level of threat. So, yeah, we, when storm surge looks to be to a certain point where we're evacuating the island, then we're moving. We move equipment up.
So, typically, you say you don't need a generator, or--
Well, there's definitely a level of a storm surge where we'd have to--
Turn it off.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to run it. If it was not a stand high enough built up to maybe what this building's at is 12 feet elevation. I mean, we could get a surge as higher than that. So, even if we put a generator at that elevation, it could be flooded. We talked about having a portable, and we'd have to trailer that to higher ground, and then come back. And it was kind of weighed out for the cost of the different options. They taught, we were looking at diesel option, and there was the talk of like maintaining that large diesel fuel tank, you know, yearly and--
So, council was studying this, or--
It was studied.
Forward based on cost logistics, maintenance.
Yeah, okay. And then, as the stormwater projects, we just approved, we did a resolution for a capital note for, to complete five of the BMPs that were scheduled out to 25, 26. We have them scheduled for next year to begin construction. So, I can update that.
I liked page 35. Everything's crossed off.
Motion to approve.
Next case.
Then we come to private property rights.
This is another mandatory, so.
And this language was taken from the statute verbatim.
But doesn't this just undermine home rule?
This is a statement of--
There you go. Did you change elements on me before I bid on this?
Sorry.
It's in.
No, that's a new one.
It's in the last section of--
Page 40.
Did we skip too far ahead?
That's, we haven't done anything with capital improvements element.
Oh, it's a section of it somewhere.
By itself.
I thought it was the last page.
No. Capital improvements element?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, carry. Private property rights element. This is the attorneys.
As Ms. Fisher was indicating a moment ago, it is statuteually required to have this language in, understanding the members' philosophical concerns about, doesn't this undermine home rule? Private property rights have always existed. This is a recitation and recognition of that. Whether that is being used in a way to undermine home rule is really more of a philosophical and political debate that continues with each legislative session, and what home rule means versus what it meant in 1968 and even 15 years ago are different things in some ways in terms of how it's being conceptualized. But this is the language that, if you did, there are a handful of things in here that if you did nothing else, you have to do. This is one of, this was adopted in the 2021, I believe, legislative session. You have to do this as you come into compliance. And one of the things that will get your proposed complaint amendments bounced back, this is an easy checkbox that they look for, and if it's not there, basically go back, you didn't do it right.
Motion to approve. Wait a minute. I have one question.
Yeah.
It said the right of property owner to dispose of his or her property through sale or gift. Does that include wills? What's in a will?
Will is typically considered devised, but it can be considered, I mean, it's donative. So, yes, it's captured there. And I would not, even if they, there's more precise language that could be added, the fact that the legislature didn't add it, I wouldn't go messing with it. The language here is a carbon copy of what the statute has, and we're putting it there to mandate that. I would not--
In other words, carry on.
That's my advice. I just give advice.
I just conduct a meeting. All those in favor of private property rights element?
Aye.
Motion approved. Now, these, the next batch is all the maps that I diligently searched for commercial property, and I couldn't find any.
So, these are just in support of what we've already approved, right? So, we don't have to even address this.
It's all-- Potable water, et cetera. Also, this is controlled by this county.
I had a question about the residential median land use. Do--
Where are you doing?
Question about residential median land use off the land use map, future land use. Does that typically include the apartments, motels, timeshares?
It can, yes. It's 15 units to the acre, so that can include either single or multifamily development. Timeshares are kind of a gray area, whether they're counted as residential or temporary lodging. But since you don't allow temporary lodging, you would either classify them as residential, or they would be non-conforming.
Okay.
Or they would be vacation rentals, but you--
Is there any way somebody could use timeshare to affect an Airbnb-type rental?
Timeshare is a completely different legal entity under statutes. It's a completely different definition. What I can tell you is, there is a, the gray area of the law is always there, right? And so, something we started to see in California, and even in some jurisdictions here, is examples of multiple parties having legal ownership of a property and privately and among themselves agreeing to use that property. Like, my family, you and I buy, the three of us buy together, and I say, "I'm gonna get it the first weekend of every month. You get it the second, you get it the third." And it operates pseudo-like a timeshare, but we are deeded owners who have property rights, as we've recognized. And if one of those property rights is free and fair use of your property, that's a more problematic challenge relative to the short-term rental landscape for local governments as they adapt. But generally speaking, a timeshare is a separate and distinct legal entity from a transient lodging establishment or short-term rental, as it's typically referred to as.
And the remaining data, analysis sheets, is there anything that the board wants to discuss whatsoever? I entertain a motion to accept a rest of the--
Should we hear from anybody?
He never said anything, so I just let it go at that. He would have spoke if he wanted. You want to speak?
I'll add a couple of comments. I didn't want to bother you, J.C.
Oh, okay.
So, you had your answer on the transportation system. There is some definition in there. It really is broad term.
It is.
Yeah, it makes you think of railway and buses. And thanks for answering that, Rudy. I never knew why we didn't have a stop or two for buses. The beautification is interesting. As you're communicating with council and this continuous studies and traffic comes up, I think it's really important to know, everyone except, growth is here, growth is gonna continue to expand. And it is possible through incremental studies, removal of a tree, whatever it may be, we can keep doing things that will help. I'm gonna give you an example, just as a resident with knowledge. And I was at the easement one night during peak times of traffic. And I was, it was purposeful. I wanted to go down there and just observe what's backing up, why. Took my bike up to the Gulf Boulevard, came out of the parking lot. Another gentleman did the same with his chair, looked like a visitor. And I was purposeful of not going to the crosswalk while traffic was flowing. That individual looked at me like I was dumb and didn't know where the button was and just stopped traffic. If he would have waited five minutes till the light went red, traffic would have stopped naturally. So, it's those little things that everywhere you look, we can do a little bit better, even as residents, on how we're looking at it. That'll be interesting on lanes, middle lanes. Can we potentially use them at some point and have signs where maybe we are directing individuals that the middle lane is open to the turning lane farther if the tree is removed? And signs should say, "Be aware there are residents that need to come out." So, again, the little things, I think we can do better. We're not gonna get rid of the traffic, so keep that in mind. Airbnb was interesting discussion. I don't know where it's gonna come here or not, but we have to also be aware that the problems are not always the renters. The problems are the owners of the property. And maybe there's process around that as you're working with council, if it ever needs to be addressed, that there's something they can do differently, whether it's how they interview, how they approve, who are their guests, how long, whatever. But I've learned that as, as family owns property in this way in different states and cities, that it really comes down to the owner, not always who they're renting to. Just keep that in mind. And then, I had a last one for you, Kyle, was what, you went through this process. Did you, do you see the changes that are going to give you a better guide? Is there anything missing for you that you would have wanted to see changed that just didn't come up?
I think as we talked it all through, I think there was a lot of valid points on what we wanted, like some problems that exist and what we wanted to see changed. But I think in this process, there's only so far we can take.
Right, right.
So, but reflecting back, definitely put, just by reviewing this comp plan, the overall moving forward, future of the city vision and perspective.
Okay, cool.
Summing it all up. And we talked about, you know, looking through our codes and doing more code review, and I think this is a good first step and all that.
Awesome. Took overall good exercise, not necessarily changes. Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks, J.C.
You're quite welcome. And that triggered something I was thinking of, that somehow or another, there could be some signage along the road saying, "Please yield to residents." Trying to get out during the peak times, you can't get out?
We take away the middle lane.
If there was a middle lane--
You jump into that middle lane, and there's a tree.
Another problem.
So--
It's called suicide.
But if there is something that, coming from the board, to say, "Hey, think of the residents that can't get out of their driveway, can't get off their street on the Gulf Boulevard," just, and that triggered me. That was right.
That's why I'm here.
Please think of that as city manager.
There was a major accident on a medium down in San Key. Did you hear about that? Yeah, well, I mean, I think one of these, I shouldn't assume, someone, some idiot, let me just sum it all up under that, decided they were gonna go middle lane to pass. And you know, that's typical, these out-of-staters, whatever. And they went right over the two trees, right over. I don't know what happened.
Who was there?
But I was leaving from downtown Clearwater, coming back, and just lights everywhere, two trees down. You can go down and see the medium now doesn't have trees in it in San Key, so.
I've seen that, yeah.
Did you see that? Yeah, wow. I don't know what happened to the person.
I would like to ask Patty if there is a, is there a reason for another meeting for us, or can we recommend from this point that as modified, that it go to this city council for their approval?
Randy, so if one modifies--
Yes, I would say that what you, you've already, because of the way you went through it, and you did piecemeal consensus each time, you voted on this moving forward, subject to whatever direction we've given thus far, such as updating the numbers on the chart for the budget and otherwise. So, this is your final hearing as it relates to the comp plan. It would go now to the city council. There's this very fun back-and-forth waltz they do from here to the state to another agency within the state, then back to us, then goes up again. It's not a normal first and second reading process like you see. But yes, we have everything we need from this body, and we-- But yes, we have everything we need from this body, and we've noticed things, et cetera, such that we are prepared to move forward with all the requisite advertisements and hearings.
Okay. As chairman, I would like to recommend, no, I'd like to make a motion that a unanimous acceptance as changed to our formal votes be presented to council for their approval of the comprehensive plan. And I, as chairman, make the motion to the board.
Second.
Seconded by the co-chairman. Is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for your cooperation. It's been a long, arduous meeting, and especially thanks to you and Patty for putting up with all this foolishness and the brains we picked. And the representative from the citizenry, which is very important to me.
Yes, sir.
And should be, and Patty's diligence, and do not answer everybody, just answer me. I will call this meeting adjourned and thank my members.
I believe there's another item on your agenda, Mr. Chair.
Where?
On the review of the draft ordinance.
What?
Review of the draft ordinance. No, that was the, that was the review of the ordinance.
That was included from five to six.
Yeah, that was the final pages of all of this, and so we made the motion.
This one, Mr. Chair.
So I just wanted to make sure I was addressing the manager's concern.
I touched every base.
Yes, sir. Bransley.
I formally declare this meeting adjourned, and I'm very reluctant to say that it was Rudy's last meeting. He consented to stay on, so that means there's a vacancy on my committee for the first time in 10 years, 15, Patty, I don't remember.
Yeah, is that true?
There's been so many mayors and people.
Done.
But I want to formally thank-
Thank you, Rudy. Thirty years.
For his service.
You're the best.
Done? No, you have just begun.
The mind is so good.
And I want to, Chairman and friend, thank you very much for the city, for the service, and for your help. I declare this meeting formally closed.